Hello and welcome to today's Town Hall on the restructuring effort. My name is Amanda Dartley, I'm the Director of Communications and Marketing for AAMFT. Joining us is Dr. Tracy Todd, Executive Director for AAMFT. If you cannot see the webcams, select the webcam drop-down menu in the left-hand corner of your toolbox. Select the "Show Webcams" option from the drop-down menu. You may need to adjust the size so that the view of the slide presentation is larger than the webcam. To do so, place your mouse on the icon circle below and the arrows will appear. Drag the icon to the left and adjust the size for your preference. This final view allows you to see both the slides and the webcam in reasonable sizes. At any time during the presentation, you can submit questions. Your control panel may be collapsed. To expand it, select the red button on the right-hand side to open the panel. Once the panel is expanded, select the Questions tab at the bottom. You can type your questions in the blank field and press Enter. Today we will start with those questions that have already been submitted as part of the registration process. As we mentioned before, additional questions can be submitted during the Town Hall and we will answer them as time permits. Today for our first question, it comes from a clinical fellow in Georgia who asks, "Why is the AAMFT board prohibiting that we restructure?"
Well, there are really three solid reasons behind this that we have seen play out. The first one is that AAMFT has a mandatory two-tier system which is really not price-competitive. And what this does to us is that, when I say "price-competitive", is that with the mandatory two-tier system, you have AAMFT dues plus the division dues on top that you must pay for. And this is something that, as we have surveyed former prospective members, it is one of the reasons that they cite that they do not participate or have not joined AAMFT. And also, they have indicated they want to join AAMFT. So, we know that from a price point of view, this is a barrier to people joining or staying with AAMFT. The second reason is that benefits are really based on residence. Where one lives determines what they get from AAMFT. And as we all know, if a business has inconsistencies, I mean, if you went to Starbucks and you had very inconsistent sort of coffees based on where you were and you couldn't depend on it, that's not a very good situation for the company or the brand, if you will. So, member benefits are very different based on your zip code, your state. And this is something that is contrary to how successful membership organizations run. And it's one of those things that in today's world, where everything is customized, it really kind of flies in the face of what consumers expect. The other part, the third reason, is the void that we are looking at in terms of retirement. And that we know that there's probably about 8,000 clinical fellows who will be retiring over the next 15 years. That means we're going to lose a significant percentage of our highest membership category. And the result of that is a loss of the federal advocacy, legal risk consultation, ethics program, and the Journal of Marriage and Family Therapy, all put together. And that's what the budget would reflect. I want to point this out because a lot of our states and a lot of divisions say that, "Hey, we're doing pretty good." But the math doesn't suggest that. And one recent division I talked with and went through the numbers with, they had over a 10-year period, the pre-clinical fellow indicated that they should have had about 170 to 180 pre-clinical fellows become clinical fellows. In the end though, over that same 10-year period, they lost 20 clinical fellows in the end and their penetration rate of clinical fellows to licensees had dropped. So, that means even if there was a certain percentage of those pre-clinical fellows becoming clinical fellows, it wasn't keeping pace with the group that we know is going to retire out and leave the association. And there was an example of a division that was losing members, losing ground. And that is happening all across the United States and in Canada because we know that their AAMFT was built on the baby boomer generation and that is the population that is leaving. So, we know that that is going to happen, it's just a matter of when. The other reason is that AAMFT, in terms of what I would call leadership of relevance, really is not keeping pace with our sister association. If we take a look at NASW, for example, they have about 11 specialty practice sections. American Psychological has about 54, what they call special interest groups. ACA has about 27 interest groups and networks that they call them. AAMFT is zero. And what this does is keeps AAMFT really in a position of weakness when it comes to relevancy in terms of specializations and advancement of the profession. These other organizations have interest groups that can advance the association, advance the profession. So, they can have an interest group on any given topic. And for example, you might have an interest group for AAMFT. It might be an interest group that could be created on MFTs in schools or treating military families. But when it comes to advancing the profession, and we get phone calls all the time about, "Hey, we need some help, we need the AAMFT's input." I'll give two examples of that. Last year, I got a phone call from the American Psychological Association wanting us to comment on an integrated healthcare paper. Well, I was able to find some members that I knew were interested in this, write a response, and send that off. The American Psychiatric called and said, "Could you comment on these high-risk variables and this assessment? And we need the comments by yesterday." Well, I couldn't find people because the due date was too late. But what I did do is I commented on it and sent it in. Well, these are other groups that have works, ongoing works, and then seeking input from AAMFT. We don't have the ability to meet all those requests. We never will, that's impossible. But we not only can't meet those requests, we are not players in asking others. So, while we always want to be invited to the table and we get invited to the table increasingly over the last couple of years, we are not in a position to do any inviting because we don't have any structure that allows us to advance our association and profession. And these numbers here are really kind of tail-to-tail.
Our next question came from a clinical fellow in New York. He was curious about the main differences between our current structure and the proposed new one. For the sake of explaining it, maybe I'll go over our current structure and then you can go over the proposed new one?
Sounds good.
So, this diagram is an example of how our current structure is laid out. AAMFT currently is focused geographically. We have state and provincial divisions throughout North America. And most of the state and provincial advocacy is done by these divisions on their own. Federal advocacy is done through the national organization. And we have mandatory division dues, so where you are automatically a member of the division of residence. To look at the structure, we'll look at four different MFTs and how they kind of work within it. First, we have our MFT in China. Currently, they only have one method of collaboration via established divisions or through the states and the provinces. Since this MFT lives outside of North America, there's actually no formal method for them to engage or collaborate with other MFTs. Essentially, while they can be a part of AAMFT, there's really no opportunity for them to interact within the association. Our second is our passionate leader. Once again, our passionate leader is a member of their mandatory geographic division. However, this offers them limited opportunities for collaboration and leadership because they really only have one path. If they have a strong division, there might be a lot of opportunities within that division. However, if they live in a weaker division, they won't have as many opportunities. They really lack the opportunity to advance the profession or any of the emerging sub-specialties because we simply are not structured to do so. Our third member here is the new professional. The new professional is more budget-conscious and they may be facing student loans or the upkeep of starting a new practice. They might be eager to contribute, but facing these economic hardships might struggle to actually be able to do so. They still need access to their things like the discounted liability insurance and benefits that come from being a member of AAMFT. However, they're also required to pay dues for their local division. Our fourth is our millennial member. They might still be unsure of where they want to settle since they're much more connected around the world. And they may have family and friends that interact in different geographic areas. But they likely found their passion in working with the LGBT community. AAMFT, because we lack a way for collaboration on sub-specialties, does not offer this member a way to enhance his interests or to find mentorship opportunities to further develop their career.
Under the proposed structure, what I really want to highlight immediately is that those top two lines there, "Proposed structure," says "Board-driven, member-informed, staff-managed." Under our current structure, it's really "board-driven, member-informed, staff-managed", de-emphasizing the "member-informed" because there's no way for the members to inform the board about what's trending in the field of marriage and family therapy. Where the proposed structure, we have "board-driven, member-informed" with the interest groups. The interest groups are very organic and they stay on top of what is going on in the field. So, it informs the board, therefore informs the association, and helps the association better meet the needs of members throughout the world. So, if we go back to the examples that Amanda was using, if we have someone, a member, lives in China, this member may share some clinical interests with a number of folks living in the United States, Canada, and other areas throughout the world. And through an interest group, can be engaged with AAMFT and with membership. The passionate leader can be part of the family team, can be part of an interest group, and developing those leadership skills. Particularly that passionate leader coming from maybe a state or a division that doesn't have a real active membership and they're limited just based on numbers. There's nobody there to engage with. So, the passionate leader now has an opportunity. The new professional. The new professional maybe isn't able to afford belonging to all of the interest groups and at this point in time says, "Hey, I just want to belong to AAMFT, get my liability coverage." And that's good, in a couple of years, I can develop and financially be in a better place and join. But also, the new professional for AAMFT, we are dedicated to the new professional and we will have a free interest group to the emerging professionals. And so, through the interest group, this individual will be able to engage with AAMFT despite the budget considerations. And finally, the millennial. The millennial, as Amanda pointed out, is someone who is really connected throughout the world, is really looking at customization of benefits. Millennials want what they want and they want it now. And when you cannot meet that need, and we have millennials who are in states or provinces and part of divisions that simply don't have the numbers in order to produce the programming to meet that need, millennials can join interest groups that they're interested in and start networking with people throughout the world on that topic. So, we're better able to be member-informed based on the new structure. When we take a look at the restructuring, comparing it to our current structure or a no-vote for restructuring, what we have just covered is a number of variables. First off, you see that we're competitive in our dues versus other mental health associations without the mandatory. It allows people to choose how they want to engage. So, if the member says, "I want to belong to three interest groups," they can. If they don't want to belong to any interest groups, they don't need to. But it's members' voice and choice. They're also able to tailor membership experience to their professional wants and needs. And so, their individual wants, as we all know, I'm getting old. My clinical interests when I was in private practice changed probably four or five times. And I would have loved to have been able to have had a support group, if you will, or an interest group to go to as those things change. And as we know, that there are some topics in therapy that come and go. And that's how interest groups, healthy interest groups exist, they come and go. And so, you're able to tailor your membership experience to what it is you need. There's also opportunities for organized engagement among subspecialties. So, if there's an interest group that is a subspecialty, you're able to engage and develop it. And so, that would be an advancement of both the profession, the association, and then as well as you individually being able to associate with folks and possibly able to get maybe a credential or get certified or be able to somehow advance your knowledge in that area. Opportunities for engagement for MFTs outside of North America. Right now, we look at our e-news, our e-news is being opened in at least 55 different countries. Whether AAMFT wants to acknowledge it or not, we are transnational. And we know that without a change in our structure, we can't meet those folks' needs at all, at all. They're on their own when they're outside, you know, both the United States and Canada. And so, the opportunities, engagement are really limited. With a yes vote on the restructuring, we open up those opportunities because we all know the world's becoming more flat and there's going to be increasingly a number of folks outside the United States and Canada involved in marriage and family therapy. So, that number's never going to go down, it's going to go up. The flexibility in the structure to adjust to emerging member needs and wants is where we see that organic feel come in, the organic programming come in. Who would have said, you know, even 15 years ago, that neurobiology would be a huge factor in possibly marriage and family therapy? Today it is. There are things that will come and go and as they emerge, we can identify that and if there's a critical mass, we can create groups around that that not only advance the knowledge for marriage and family therapists, but also could be supportive of the profession. Equality of member benefits regardless of residence, which is what I was talking about in opportunities for engagements outside of North America. People inside of North America, we can see benefits are unequal. Someone can live in one state that has very few members, members who are candidly burned out. They're burned out in terms of their leadership, they're burned out in terms of programming, putting on conferences. They're just done. And so, what they get for their extra dues dollars might be a newsletter. Is that really fair to a member when another member, maybe just across the border, is part of a state that is very much a big state flourishing and not only offers AAMFT benefits, but then has vibrant conferences, newsletters, networking events, and stuff like that? It's not very fair, it's not an equitable arrangement, it's bad for the brand, it's bad for the profession, it's bad for the association. Opportunities for geographic networking. We have, under the yes vote for restructuring, there is the opportunity to have a geographic interest group at a level one or a level two, which we'll get in later. So, that remains a part of the MFT fabric, if you will. Federal advocacy programs are part of both the current and the proposed. Under the current system, we are going to have a beefed-up advocacy program, both at the state and the federal level. So, as you take a look at the summary of the yes vote for restructuring, you can see that the advantages far outweigh anything that we currently have and it really is for the sustainability of the association and the profession over the next 10, 15, and 20 years.
We actually got the next question from two different folks. A student in Ontario asked, "How would special interest groups or SIGs be formed? While members have a role in creating them and running them." And then similarly, a clinical fellow in California asked, "I'm very interested in the state round supervision, can I be part of developing that?"
Wow, very good questions. Interest groups and how they're forming. One of the things to keep in mind about special interest groups is that there are healthy and not-so-healthy special interest group structures. And AAMFTs, and we have done a lot of homework on what makes highly functional, highly, if you will, healthy interest groups. Because there are, and some of you may be participating in associations that have interest groups and you pay your dues and you don't get anything for it. We've done our homework, we know what works, we know what's good, we know what we're supposed to be doing. So, when we look at the creation of interest groups, those are created by our members, again, member-informed. So, a special interest group would be where a couple of members get together and they say, "Hey, we want to create a special interest group." And it might be geographic-based and then we have ratios of 30 and 70% or topical and then that's based on numbers. And they get together and they say, "We want to get this interest group off the ground." So, they get a petition, if you will, they get a number of folks signed up, preregistered, if you will. That determines, we determine the leadership that then goes to a committee that will say yes or no. And basically, the element there of approval or not approving is, do you have a balanced budget? Do you have a mission statement? And do you have leadership identified? And does it support the strategic plan of AAMFT? Pretty simple. And then the interest group would get launched. And that interest group then would be, after the first three years, all interest groups probably a little bumpy over the first three years, but that special interest group then has its leadership in place. As long as they have the numbers to support the budget, they continue to move forward. So, that way, we understand that the interest group is meeting the budgetary expectations. Also, the interest group then has deliverables and they'll identify that with, through their application. And a deliverable could be, for example, a brief, a policy brief, or a white paper, or some mini-core competencies, whatever that might be that would help advance the profession and support the MFT as well as be a benefit to the interest group. So, that's how the interest groups would be formed. We know that, again, I'm going to emphasize and stress, these are member-informed. So, the members go out, they identify what it is, they get their leadership, they recruit their folks, and then they're able to launch their interest group.
So, I guess that special interest groups are part of a crowd association when member interest is high. But what happens when that member interest is raised and the group isn't as active?
Good question. And that's where we talk about unhealthy interest group structures. There are a lot of associations out there that have those. And the interest group does not get sunsetted. So, what ends up happening is they say they have an interest group, people pay money to the group, but they get nothing for it. Well, that doesn't serve anybody very well. So, there are those thresholds that are identified and AAMFT would work with trying to, you know, if we have to do recruitment or marketing or whatever to keep the interest group above those thresholds. But, I mean, it makes good business sense and it seems like it's logical. If you don't have enough people to support the interest group and the interest is now going away, then it's time to sunset that interest group because you're basically taking dollars from folks and not delivering anything for those dollars.
Well, then I guess it allows the budget to be redirected to newer interest groups.
Correct. And so, you would have newer, a new interest group could be forming and people say, "I'm really interested in that one," and they join that one. And there was that question about supervision. And the supervision is, yes, the approved supervisors could create their own interest group or professional interest group and it could be one of those that are in training or wannabe and then there's those that are and they can help serve in the consulting or advancing of that subspecialty of AAMFT.
Our next question came from an associate member in Texas. And they were wondering, "Why are you considering the elimination of state divisions? My statements are very positive and are great conferences."
I really want to be clear, we are not thinking about eliminating state divisions. I think the Board of Directors came up with a really great "both and" solution. Understanding the limitations that we've already defined and looking at what the states have to offer. States that have really strong divisions can maintain a programming through a geographic interest group. We have a 30% threshold or a 70% threshold. And what that means is that all of the members, clinical fellows, in that geographic catchment area, what that indicates is that 30% of the clinical fellows are joining or 70% of the clinical fellows are joining, depending upon level one or level two. So, it's a "both and." A strong division will be able to maintain its geographic presence. If it's really strong and very popular, achieving 30 or 70% shouldn't be a problem. So, 30% or 70% is what they hit. That allows the state structure to be in place or the geographic structure as well as allowing the development of topical interest groups. So, it's a "both and" situation, it is not an elimination of.
And so, just to clarify, that 30% and the 70% are clinical fellows of AAMFT, not the licensed MFTs in the state?
Correct.
Yeah. We got this question from two different participants, probably from different perspectives. One was a clinical fellow in Texas and one was a clinical fellow in Idaho. And they were wondering, "What do you perceive as the pros and cons for small states and provinces versus larger ones under the restructuring?"
Well, I think that it really does differ for the size of the division of the state. For small, the pros are volunteers aren't being asked to run an association. And we increasingly see this where we have volunteers being tasked with increasingly complex laws about association management now. You have finances, you have the elections process. And we have to think about every division right now is a separate 501(c)(6). And that comes with liabilities. Now, AAMFT and our divisions have been, for much of the time, small enough where they have been below the threshold of getting on the radar. But all of them are now getting to be mature enough, if you will, where the programming, membership recruitment, having volunteers engaged in running a conference, et cetera, are now tasked with running an association. So, what if you have a conference that, you know, basically you had X amount of dollars spent on this conference and you have Mother Nature take over and you don't have that conference? What happens if you have a conference booked and the hotel says, "We don't want you here anymore"? I mean, these are getting to be more complicated. And in a small division, volunteers have to take on running an association rather than advancing the association or the profession, which our volunteers tell us they want to do. They want to be helpful, they want to, you know, really take the marriage and family therapy flag and run with it, not worry about bouncing a checkbook or having to program a conference. The pro for the large divisions is what I just talked about. It's a "both and" win. You can both retain the geographic presence as well as allow your members in that geographic region to have more benefits to choose from. So, if the benefits are such that you could have some members not join the geographic interest group, they join this topical interest group, but a couple of years later, they really like what that geographic interest group is doing, they now join that geographic interest group. So, for the large divisions, the "both and" is really a pro. The cons in the small for restructuring, there's a lack of human resources that require a focus on a more narrow mission. Restructuring is really about saying what it is you're going to do that you're good at. And with our small divisions, we already feel the pinch. There's just not enough human capital to help maintain sustainability with the mission. On the large end, the cultural shift is big and I will acknowledge that. We have a culture right now where divisions act almost like AAMFT. You have conferences, sometimes you have publications, you have networking events, et cetera. The cultural shift of saying, "Okay, we have got to be budget-conscious because it's no longer getting 100% of the people, the dues of the people who live in our state or our province. We no longer get that, we're going to have to be accountable for what it is that folks in this geographic area are interested in and being able to maintain at either the 30 or the 70%, whereas right now, it's sort of like automatic, by default, everybody's in and there isn't that much accountability to the membership because of the fact that everybody's in." And that cultural shift will really need to occur because now, everything's got to be more meaningful to the members who are participating.
Our next question comes from a pre-clinical fellow in Massachusetts. "Can you explain to me the differences between a level one and a level two SIG, special assistance group? How would these be compared?"
Okay, good question. The level one interest group and level two interest group are basically based on, if you will, at the geographical, at geographic end, I'll use that as an example since we're just talking about divisions, is 30% and the 70%. So, at the level one interest group, really you're looking at much more, going back many slides where ACA has a number of, they call them, interest group and networking groups. And what that is, level one is a networking group that is, I want to say not exclusively, because that's too harsh. I would like to say predominantly an online interest group. Now, that doesn't mean there isn't face-to-face meetings, there are face-to-face meetings. That could be done with, if you have a big interest group covering a lot of territory, why wouldn't some people in a community get together? But the real emphasis is pushing information out and getting information online. Interest group at the level two is really much more trying to follow an interest group that is, got much more face-to-face interaction. So, the level two interest group now is one that, you know, might have a conference, networking event, might have coffee meetings, et cetera, complemented by online. So, that would also fit with the numbers. The more numbers you have, the more you have the ability to pull off face-to-face events. When you have smaller numbers, you can't do that. Particularly when we have regions that I would consider big-sky regions, you know, area where there's a big sky and very few members. Getting together and having face-to-face meetings just doesn't happen very often or not without a lot of labor. So, this gives them the opportunity to be networked through the online, if you will, mechanism. So, I don't want to say that level one is 100% online because it isn't. It does have the component of having face-to-face interactions, but that is a compliment. And the level two, that's much more about having products and sales. And we already had a meeting with one group and they had, they were talking about a level two interest group and they were talking about how they were going to publish materials, how they were going to have prep work, they were going to be doing all, they had business plans already thought through on this one. I admired them, but they were five steps ahead. I admired them, but they were five steps ahead of where we were at. So the Level 2 allows that kind of interaction, just it's based on numbers and what you can do with those numbers.
So it makes sense that the budget would be smaller for a Level 1. Are there ways that a Level 1 interest group could be more entrepreneurial or could, you know, look at increasing what they could offer programmatically?
Sure. A Level 1 interest group, for example, could have, could partner with, let's say, a topical interest group. A topical interest group is, that's really big, has no home. And a Level 1 interest group that might be geographically based could say, "Why not have a small conference in our geographical area to bring all the folks together?" So they could do that. They could partner with another interest group for publications or hosting events or doing a number of different things, as you can see on the slide there, that you could have that would allow the partnering to occur. Right now, we don't have partnering. It's, I can't recall the last time two divisions partnered to create a product. They might partner to have a conference because it makes sense, but to really create a product. Here, because it's entrepreneurial and business-oriented, it allows a lot of flexibility so that Level 1 interest group that has small numbers and is networking isn't isolated. They could partner with a much bigger interest group, and they could partner with a topical interest group or a geographic interest group.
So it sounds like SIGs are mostly funded by dues and/or products that they create. Is there any amount of the AMFT budget that would go into supporting SIGs?
Yes, and we acknowledge that during the first three years of any interest group starting up, there is the startup cost of launch. And think about any business that gets started up, it takes three years for it to really get on its feet. So AMFT is committed to making sure that interest groups are successful because the bottom line is that the more interest groups are successful, the more AMFT is successful, the more members are successful, and the more the profession is successful. So this starts with AMFT having to help launch in a manner that is really most effective for our interest group. An example might even be something as simple as an interest group saying, you know, "We're over here, we want to form," and AMFT putting in an advertisement in the Family Therapy Magazine and promoting it through the E-News. So there's lots of ways AMFT will be involved in that startup phase, especially during that three years, because we know that for this group to be successful, it's going to take AMFT's help, and without that help, then we have failure, and that does no one any good.
So it sounds like the startup process would really allow the AMFT to be on the cutting edge or emerging trends in the profession or use of specialties they're developing by kind of giving them an opportunity to grow?
Absolutely. And that's the part that I get really excited about because it's that leadership of relevance. Are we engaged in relevant activity? I mean, if someone came to me and said, "Wow, I'd like to put together a group of 125 people and it's going to be on forensics, or it's going to be on something real subspecialty that we could develop," that not only benefits AMFT, but those 100 people are identified, they can be networked, and they can identify things that is needed to grow and advance and have marriage and family therapy, if you will, penetrate other markets that we need to penetrate. Another good one that I hear all the time is organizational development and consulting with small, family-owned businesses and things like that. And if we had interest groups on that and we could penetrate those markets, that would be absolutely wonderful for our field. We don't have that capability right now.
Our next question comes, came actually from a student in New York and also a pre-clinical fellow in Minnesota. And they were wondering, "How did the AMFT plan to monitor and address state-specific legislative issues so the response is timely and appropriate given the variety of legislative requirements?"
This is a great question, and this is something that AMFT is very seriously committed to. The thing I want to have you think about a little bit here is what we're calling the family team, and we've already got the model in play, and we know what we want to do with this. Because I'll be honest, as a whole, there are some divisions that do great advocacy work. But as a whole, at the state level and provincial level, provinces have a different way of doing advocacy. But at the local level, AMFT is probably about a B-, compared to our sister associations. And so we need to do a better job. And the way that, to envision this first is to really think about a matrix. And across the top, the columns, if you will, are members. And so these are folks who say, "Hey, I'm interested in advocacy." And down the side, you have what are the issues, federal as well as state advocacy. And now we can look at, from, for example, in this slide, we could say that we have six members in California, and that would be our team in California paying attention to the state advocacy issues, as well as the team that we would contact regarding state and federal advocacy issues. So now we have a team, and this team is folks who are really invested in advocacy. Currently, what we see is a lot of folks get involved in advocacy because they're on the board, and they don't want to be. And we have had many years of experience where the leadership conference comes to town and we would say, "Okay, it's time to go do the Hill visits." And we'd go do the Hill visits, and people were either very nervous, they said, "This is not what I signed up for, I don't want to really do this," or "I want you to do the talking," and they get somebody else. So the idea that behind the family team is, is we have a team of folks who are very much invested in advocacy. And so we can look at it not only by state, but then by issue. So MFTs in the schools, if we look across, we could see that, wow, we've got a number of folks, a couple of folks in California, a couple of folks from Connecticut. Now, we can start to have open space advocacy. And what do I mean by open space advocacy? Is that the walls are falling between the states. And so, and that was about a couple of months ago, I had one state, you know, basically say, "Hey, need some language on a certain bill for, that we want to run with. Do you know anybody who has that language?" I contacted another state that had just had success, got the language and passed it off. Well, under the family team model, that, there wouldn't have been me in the middle, and fortunately, I knew it. But here in the family team with open space, MFTs, all those folks who are interested in MFTs in schools, will be able to talk to one another, network with one another. So they're going to be present, as well as Medicare, or if we've got licensure laws or continuing ed requirements. So you have both by state and by issue. So we're able to have that core team, if you will, boots on the ground, locally, being able to pay attention to the advocacy issues to be able to inform AMFT as well as the team, so that way, folks who have been there can say, "Don't do this," as well as the folks who want to get there can say, "Help us," or "What do you give us for advice?" So it works both ways, and we have a more robust advocacy programming. And then also, we have the economies of scale. If you take, for example, lobbyists, okay? I don't see that we're going to get rid of lobbyists in the states, we need them. So that's going to stay retained there. But what we do know is that, you know, a certain amount of that lobbyist fee, a portion of that fee is to monitor bills. And how do they monitor those bills? Well, they monitor those bills by a computer program, okay? Well, you can have one person monitor a number of different bills from a number of different states. But what we have here is every state paying for that same service. That's just financially, doesn't make sense. And when we can eliminate that cost, that doesn't mean we eliminate the lobbyists. I want to really emphasize that. We're simply eliminating that cost of the lobbyist bill because it's such a redundant cost, and we can cover it. So when you look at the cost, the economies of scale, we can help control that better, we can do better contracting with our lobbyists, and then we have each team, state and every team, being able to focus on what is necessary at the local level. We have a much more robust, if you will, potent advocacy program.
Our next question came from a clinical fellow in Kentucky. And they were wondering, "If the restructuring were to pass and my state chooses not to have a SIG, how will we continue to get our professional development hours?"
Well, that's a good question, and first thing I want to do is to talk about, just run some numbers by it, okay? In our association with our divisions, a really good penetration rate is above 55%. What do I mean by that? I mean by 55% of the licensed marriage and family therapists are clinical fellows of AMFT, okay? So that's a good penetration rate. Now, there are some that have very high penetration rates because they got everybody grandfathered in at one time, but we see those coming down, as I had mentioned earlier. But so if we take a look at the rough estimate, about 55 down to about 35 is our range. That means 45% of the licensed marriage and family therapists are not part of AMFT. Okay, so take and put that number off to the side. And in your state, I don't know how many folks that would equal, but take that number, put it off to the side. And now you have those that are part of AMFT. All of those that are part of AMFT, the question is, is how many of them engage with AMFT? How many of them attend the conference or do a networking event, et cetera? Well, you know, we get excited when we see some stats at the 50 percentile level. So if you, but that's in a small group, if you had 100 members and you had 50% attend your conference, that's great, that's doable. But if you have 400 members, do you have 200 attend your conference? Do you have 200 engage with the division over the course of the year, okay? So if you take half of that again, so you take half of the licensed folks aren't engaged with AMFT, then half that are in part of AMFT don't engage at all with AMFT. The question is, where are they getting their professional development, where their continuing ed hours? Well, we have good ideas where they're getting those hours because they will buy products from AMFT, such as Tenio, as a non-member rate. They will buy products, as we all see, from the third-party vendors that come to every state and every city and put on the trainings. They go online and get their trainings. So I'm not so worried about getting the trainings because we know that many more folks are getting continuing ed units outside of AMFT than within AMFT. I would love that to be different because that's money we're losing. But right now, the opportunities are still there, and it's one of those things that we know that during the first three to five years, it'll be a little bit bumpy. But after we get through that three years, and we have topical interest groups forming, now we have the topical interest groups being able to offer more specialized trainings. We have them being able to say, "Let's have something on Tenio for online. Let's host a topical interest group and have them be part of the clinical case consultation over a type of an interest." Now, as the interest groups start to emerge, we now have a more robust training. And keep in mind, interest groups are very organic. We're having training that is meeting the members' needs and expectations at this time, not outdated training. So I look at the first three years being a little bumpy, but not prohibitive because we already know folks are doing it elsewhere, but I want to take a bite out of that by having our interest groups being able to provide us with the material and the content to develop that we can have the trainings housed within AMFT, which now also, as a side note, when we talked about finances earlier, the finances with these folks developing that content and those trainings is a way that they can increase their budget, not entirely dependent upon their dues. So that's another way to gain revenue in an interest group.
So then the interest group could turn around and use that revenue to develop more programming for their members?
Absolutely. And they would have more programming for their members, and then they can also start to do collaborative works with other interest groups. And you start to see cost sharing as well as the profit sharing, if you will, across the interest groups. So it becomes one of those things that, with an entrepreneurial mind, you have a whole lot more flexibility and opportunity.
Our next question comes from a clinical fellow in Ontario. How supervisors currently holding AMFT through supervisor status, be impacted if our states and provinces form associations that are independent of AMFT?
Simply put, they won't be affected. The approved supervisor designation is an AMFT designation. The only way that they will be affected is if they choose to drop their AMFT membership in lieu of a different association. But if they were to, if there was a division or anything that went independent, then what they could do is they maintain AMFT's membership and join the independent one, they're still an approved supervisor. The AMFT approved supervisor is that, AMFT's designation. So as long as they remain a member of AMFT, there's no, there's no impact.
Our last question that was submitted as part of the restructuring process is, "How the proposed restructure help us to reach out to all MFTs, not just members?" And that comes from a clinical fellow.
That's a, that's a nice question because the proposed restructure will help us to reach out to all MFTs because of the fact that if we take a look at our yes vote and summary there, and I think the reason I'm stumbling is because there's so many ways it helps in trying just to put it together. The first thing is, is that the proposed restructure creates relevancy for the profession, okay? So even though a person may not be a member of AMFT, but they are a marriage and family therapist, AMFT is over here protecting their interests and advancing the profession in areas that they may be interested in. So the relevancy is extremely important there, is that AMFT, again, is on the cutting edge, it knows what is emerging, it can keep track of that, it can form the groups to study it, and it can move it forward. So non-members benefit by AMFT being relevant. Being relevant means we advance the profession, and advancing the profession helps everyone. It's the home for subspecialties, and I want to take a minute to focus in on this one because there is a story here with subspecialties. Many, many years ago, the American Medical Association had about 90-plus percent penetration rate. What that means is that the American Medical Association, 90% or more of all physicians belong to the American Medical Association. About 20, 15 years ago, somewhere in there, I don't think AMA was over 30%. It might have been hovering around 30%. And the reason being, and we all know it, is that AMFT sort of, or AMA sort of blew up. All the subspecialties, orthopedic surgeons, for example, went off and created their own association based on their clinical interest. And it busted apart the American Medical. Now, granted, even if their weakened state would be, is huge compared to AMFT, but they were severely weak and seriously enough that this is what's driving our issue, for example, down in Texas. American Medical Association has a mantra right now that is "Take Back Medicine," in which they are trying to get everything back under the physician's scope. And the reason that occurred is that, over time, nurses started to chip away, as did other subspecialties chip away, and AMA lost members, they lost advocacy power, they really became fragmented and weakened for that association. So today, while many of those subspecialty associations went out and became independent, those subspecialty associations, some of them didn't survive, and members had to come back and join AMA. Some did survive and fight with AMA, if you will, and the bottom line is, is that they hurt the overall profession. Learning from that, AMA, AMFT, by having a yes vote on the restructuring, positions us to keep that housed within AMFT and not to have a repeat of the American Medical Association. And by us being able to have the subspecialties housed with AMFT, we become irrelevant, we advance the profession, that helps the non-MFTs, and it doesn't weaken AMFT. We also have a home for those subspecialties, which is critically important. By having a home, they don't have to go find a home, which weakens us. And then finally, the flexibility to meet potential members' wants and needs is real important. Remember, back the very first slide or the second slide, the reason prospective members and former members leave is they didn't have their needs met, and they look for us to provide the subspecialty. I mean, I think anybody on this call can probably look at it and think, just five minutes, would you like to have a topical interest group on what it is you're clinically interested in? Most of us would say yes, but we don't have the mechanism to do that. So for the non-member, now AMFT becomes attractive, and that attractiveness can help boost up our membership, hopefully, by recruiting them into AMFT and hopefully having them play a leadership role, having them help develop this subspecialty. So there's a lot of things that change, a lot of advantages from a yes vote on restructuring will create, both not only for our current members, but for those who are not members, they'll benefit from it, and hopefully, we would be able to draw them into the association.
That is the end of our, of our questions that were sent in, and we have a few that we have submitted. Again, if you'd like to submit a question, use the question box on your webinar panel and consider we do that now. If you find that you have questions later, you can always email them to restructuring@amft.org. And as a reminder, the voting will be done via the ballot from the meeting until through August 15th. Our first question is, "I understand the idea of changing the advocacy structure, but how long do you think it will take to put this new structure in place so it can be effective?"
Good question. Good question. Had a meeting this morning about that, actually. And in terms of looking at the structure, the family team, we are looking at that, we really want to launch the family team by September of this year. And that will at least give us the overall structure to be able to move forward, if the bylaws pass. We know that if the bylaws don't pass, we'll have to modify that structure ever so slightly, because we don't have interest groups. But we'll keep the same structure, because we know that we have to, as I said earlier, I know a lot of divisions do a very good job, don't want to be saying that they're not. But overall, our advocacy program is, is, like I said, about a B minus compared to others. So we're looking at, by the end of this year, really having the family team beefed up, and then into 2016, having the programming start to come really online. And I mean, online is programming up and launched, and being able to identify, if you will, our Hill Day, how we're going to do Hill Days, how we're going to do local events back in each state, et cetera. So looking at 2015 and 16 as the absolute, 2016 would be the absolute latest before it would be fully launched. And right now, it's the recruitment time. And so when you see advertisements for, and messages of, do you want to be part of the family team? Click yes, join, please, thank you.
Hi, we have another question. I know that there's been a lot of talk about the millennials and their changing preferences as we move forward. How do we know that what millennials are looking for aligns up with what our future members are looking for?
Well, we did survey the students, and we surveyed the preclinical fellows, and we surveyed everybody who fell into the millennial category. And they do align. And it's one of those things that, we have seen the same trends in our association as other associations. I'd like to add that AMFT is not the only association that is going through a restructuring process. There are a number of them that are already looking at their structures. Because of the fact that we know that the millennial population is critically different, and I'm going to take a minute or two, man, if you don't mind, a minute or two to explain this one. Because demographically speaking, the baby boomers were joiners, and this is from big data, from all associations, joiners built associations. Those that are called, I hate using labels, Generation Xers, were not, okay, joiners, okay? And then you have the millennials, and they are. The difference is, is that millennials join on a value, they join on seeing an advantage. And got to keep in mind, it makes sense, because millennials are really the children of the baby boomers. So there's that transmission of value. And as AMFT has seen that, we see the same thing, and man, correct me if I'm wrong here, at the conferences, when we have networking events, millennials are always the first to join, take the leadership role. We have the questions and answers regarding restructuring. Not too long ago, I did one of these, and it was a millennial who basically said, I don't see what the problem is with restructuring. And it's one of those things, because of the fact that it makes sense about how you're organized. And finally, we do see that with AMFT, in terms of choosing what it is they want to engage in. Some millennials, for example, will participate in a conference, while others will participate at the leadership symposium. Others want to participate via Twitter or LinkedIn. And we see the same patterns that other associations see, and what Pew Research and all the other major big data collectors see with millennials. It's playing itself out in AMFT. So our members are really no different than other members?
We had another question come in about the membership loss, that they're retiring baby boomers. Essentially, you know, we talked a little bit about how, we lose about 25% of our existing clinical fellows. And that's if, if we maintain everyone into the membership categories, from student to preclinical, to clinical. This question was more about how they really saw that as the scariest aspect of this, is us really losing numbers in the profession. Can you speak a little bit to, when do you foresee this really happening, and is there anything we can do to combat it, by not changing?
By not changing? No. By not changing, we can't combat it. And the reason I say no, pretty definitively, is that you're talking about aging out. And to risk of sounding morbid, you've got retirement, resignation, and death. And we have the baby boomer population, and that's what we're looking at. So you have a segment of the population that is just done. I mean, they're at the end of the developmental lifecycle, and moving on to other things, whether it's professionally or into a spiritual world. So we have, they're moving on. And when we take that population and look at that, and we take a look at our preclinical fellows and our students, and at 100%, if 100% of them became clinical fellows, would we make up the loss? The answer is no. There's just not enough of us in that pipeline. So if we stay the same, even under the most prime conditions, AMFT is going to do this, as well our divisions. It's a slippery slope, it's all, like I said, it's already starting when I, I spoke earlier about that state that I had identified, that they should have 170 new clinical fellows, because that's based on the preclinical fellows that they've had over the last 10 years. Yet, at the end of 10 years, they're minus 26 or 27, something like that. So that shouldn't happen. But it's happening. And it's just mathematically impossible for our demographics to make it up.
Another one of the questions that we had sent in is, you know, we talk about the voting and strategy. Is there any potentiality, or what are the rationale behind not being able to maintain all of the system that we have now, and then just add any special interest groups to that?
Well, we'd have to double our dues. I mean, and do you want to pay double the dues? Because you're talking about two distinct programming needs. And that is, already, we know we're not price competitive. So, I'm not saying double the dues, but we'd have to increase the dues. And when you're already out of the market in terms of price, that is just not a feasible option. And so, that's just a structure that we cannot do, because of the price points.
And then the last question that we got was, you speak of increasing the relevancy of the profession. I like that, it's really important to me. I'm not sure I 100% understand how SIG can help us increase our relevancy. Can you reveal it a little bit more?
Yes. And I kind of glossed over it real quick. But the example I will use is relevancy is being invited to the table. AMFT, over the last couple of years, we have done, I think, my humble, we have done a good job of getting invited to the table. We've been invited to White House events, of which I have attended, I even tweeted those out, so man, I can be happy about that. Attended to White House events, we've been invited to the table. And that's, that's a big plus for AMFT. But are we going to get invited to all of the tables if we are not contributing? And we are not contributing. So when it comes to leadership of relevance, we get invited because others have something to invite us to seek our input about. And interest groups allow us to create those things. So if it's a policy statement, if it's a white paper, if it's a set of core competencies, or at least a start of some core competencies regarding a topical interest group, we can create that from a systemic mindset. We've got to think about how much of marriage and family therapy has been sort of taken away from us. Like, the American Medical Association had people leave. We've had other associations say, you know, marriage and family therapy is not a distinct profession, it's simply a subset of a larger counseling skill. And we don't think that that is a profession. And that's something that we have to face every day, at the local, but certainly at the federal level, because we've got groups out there saying, you're not a distinctive profession. And I can't buy that, I won't buy that, have to fire me before I can buy that. It's not something that I would, I'm going to go with. I believe in our profession. Interest groups allow us, the mechanism to create the content, to create these things that we can then put forth to policymakers, to consumer groups, to other professional associations, and say, now, you know what? You've been inviting us to the table, it's time for you to be invited to our table. But until we get interest groups, and we can generate that type of content, the best we'll do is get invited to the table now and then. We'll do our best to always be invited, that's the best we'll be able to do, because we won't have a table to invite anybody to. And that's where I, of all the things, the price competitiveness, all of the stuff that I've been talking about during this talk, of all the things that make me the most nervous, that's the one that makes me the most nervous. Because AMFT is on the cusp of really being recognized as this profession, at the same time, we're fighting back those other associations that don't want us to be recognized as a profession. That's our relevancy, and that's what we're fighting for. And if we don't have the mechanisms to remain relevant, we won't remain relevant.
And all the questions that we've had for today. Again, if you have follow-up questions, you can always email them to restructuring@amft.org. And a reminder, the voting will be placed between June and August 15th. Your ballot will be mailed to you, and also sent to you via email. Thank you, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you all. Take care.